I'm gonna call the meeting order, 6 o'clock. I'm gonna say a prayer and pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
Thank you dear Jesus for everything you've done for us, Lord. Thank you for this day and this hour that we live in, Lord. Thank you for watching over us and giving us good weather today and this week, Lord. And just thank you for the harness festival and all the people that was in it and did a good job, great job with what they're doing for the city by us. Lord, just come down and give us all the directions we need to make the right decision for the city, Lord. We just love you and praise your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and consider it a body for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank y'all. We're gonna start off with the citizens' comments and we need to get...
Mr. Chairman, before we take citizen comments, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to add four items on a new business. One is the recommendation of the city to pay off the spec building. Number two is dilapidated housing. Number four, Warren Street. Number three is a resolution for the city's splotch. And number four, consider Michael Taylor's well permit.
Okay, do we have a permit? A motion for that.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Motion passed. Okay, there's no citizens want to ask anything, so...
Consider for what?
Michael Taylor's well permit.
Okay, we're gonna approve the minutes with changes if any of the March 7, 2016 regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passed. Approve the minutes with changes if any of the March 15, 2016 call meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Motion passed. Under old business, we've got to appoint a new member to the Hawkinsville Historic Preservation Commission Post 3 to fill expired term of William Coleman, M.D., which was a three-year term expires 2/15/2016. Was tabled at the March 7, 2016 regular meeting.
Ms. Jane Cradle has agreed to serve, excited to serve on that board if you would approve that.
I'll make that in form of a motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
She'll do a good job, Oleman.
She sure will. Okay, no new business? Well, it is new business, okay, excuse me. List of proposed splotch projects, dollar amounts for the 2016 splotch. Tim?
Included in that is a city resolution that Shelley wanted us to consider, which really just documents the fact that we're doing a splotch. That second page there gives you a breakdown of what those splotch numbers are. It's also an intergovernmental agreement with the county where the dollars that are brought in under this splotch will be split 50/50 between the city and the county and will point down what those capital projects would be. And the following page is the public notice that will go into the newspaper prior to the adoption or the election so that the public will know what we're voting on for that 1% splotch.
Okay, do we have...
I think technically the city doesn't have to do a resolution, or hardly anything, because the splotch is technically a county. But again, since we are contributing to the...
Restitution.
Since we're getting the receipts and it's our projects, I just felt like we ought to go ahead and get in our minutes on what we're doing and so forth.
Okay, we've proven that's set in stone?
Can't be.
Money move one of the other, do you have to?
If you do a project, if you put a project, David, correct me if I get wrong on this now, but if you do, if you state a project and you come up short, it has to come out of general fund. You have to do the projects you say. If you do a project and you end up coming in under budget, you can move that money toward another project.
We always try to do that.
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve these. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passed. Approve the resolution for Hollins H&amp;V Company.
You have a resolution here in your book, and if you'll allow me to read that for you, I've been in contact with corporate friends up at the corporate office for Hollins Corporation, and I'll just read this resolution as it appears here. Whereas the City of Hawkinsville Board of Commissioners here and after called the Commissioners, employees and staff of the City of Hawkinsville desire to continue to have the presence of Hollins Corporation Company herein called H&amp;V in the City of Hawkinsville and... Whereas H&amp;V first located in the City of Hawkinsville in 1988 and has been a tremendous corporate partner for the City of Hawkinsville. And whereas the presence of H&amp;V in Hawkinsville allows the city to be a stronger community because of providing stable employment for the citizens of the City of Hawkinsville. And whereas the employees of H&amp;V provide outstanding leadership in public, private, and civic organizations in the City of Hawkinsville. Whereas the city recognizes that a reliable supply of natural gas at regionally and nationally competitive pricing is essential to the continued success of H&amp;V's Hawkinsville location. Whereas the city understands that H&amp;V is considering making a large investment with the expansion of its current facility, and should Hawkinsville be selected for the expansion, the decision is based on the expectations and reasonable assurance that the City of Hawkinsville will work with H&amp;V over the long term to fulfill the natural gas commitment. Now therefore, be it resolved, and it is hereby resolved, that the Commissioners are committed to a shared purpose with H&amp;V and desire to grow the trust and respect of such a valued partner for the City of Hawkinsville. And be it further resolved that the Commissioners are on a sustained path of commitment to H&amp;V to help H&amp;V continue to be one of the City of Hawkinsville's strongest entities. So resolve.
Do we have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passed. Now we're gonna appoint a new member to the Hawkinsville Development Authority to replace John Crady to fill the unexpired term of John Crady who has moved to Atlanta. Term expires 9/18/2018, four-year term.
I'd like to appoint Tony Hendricks for that position. And he's been asked in the...
He has been asked. And he's been a previous member of that board.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, all in favor? Motion passed. Appoint a new member to the Plassey County Hawkinsville Development Authority to replace John Crady to fill the unexpired term of John Crady who has moved to Atlanta. Same thing. Term expires 4/5/2017, four-year term.
As y'all are aware, we've got two boards. We have one that's just to Hawkinsville, and we have one that's Hawkinsville and Plassey County. And John was one of our appointees for both. So again, I'd like to motion Tony Hendricks also to fill that position on that board as well.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passed. City managers update.
You got that.
Okay, recognition for the City of Hawkinsville to pay off the spec building.
The Development Authority, the Hawkinsville Development Authority this morning voted to make a recommendation to this board to pay the building off sudden stat when they have an economic development client that would like to have the building and they're working towards negotiating. Having that building in hand, having the title of that building makes the negotiations a little bit easier. So the balance on that account is $79,500 and change.
You have the real number?
Less than $80,000 to pay that off, which we can do. And just make it easier negotiating with the Development Authority with the prospect, because they do have a current prospect that would love to have the building.
Okay. You think we can do that? It's a long time before tax dollars start coming back in.
Well, you've already been spending about 50 out of your general fund each year to fund even to move that bank note, so you can take what's in that economic development fund and do another, you got a general...
What it's doing, both banks has a lien on the property, and we're going ahead and releasing that lien so to cut down on some time if they do have, this prospect does come along, that little hurdle's already been passed. Sounds good to me.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? We paid off the spec, though. Okay, we got number two is the Blight House on Warren Street for dilapidated housing.
The people who bought the old hospital has a contract of land across the street. The house I'm talking about is the White House across the street that...
The old nurses'.
The old nurses' house. They are trying to work with the owners to buy the house for the property, but they don't necessarily need the property. But in order to get federal grants, they cannot have any dilapidated houses adjoining their property. So my recommendation too is that we go ahead and start the process of getting it torn down. I'm not sure as far with the process, but I think we need to give, go ahead and get approval to give leeway to city manager and the city attorney to do whatever steps necessary for us to get move that, because that's a project we cannot let stand in the way.
Do we do a lien on that when we, after we do that? Lien on the amount?
If we end up tearing it down, it's a long process, and again, David, correct me if I'm wrong, but we first have to send some certified letters basically asking them to take the house down. And they can either do it, or they can say no. If they say no, then we send a certified letter, which basically takes them to court. And then if the judge rules in our favor, then the judge will give them so many days to take it down. And then if they still don't, then we can take it down. And if we take it down, the cost of that goes as a lien against the property. Is that pretty much?
Yes, let me just read the first sentence of the law from the clear of the... I would like you to make a motion that we either condemn this project or have it declared unfit. But this said, this is if you declare it unfit. Whenever a resident, whenever a request is filed with the public officer who is the building inspector by a public authority, who which is you, or at least five residents in the municipality charging that any dwelling, building, structure, or property is unfit for human habitation, of commercial, industrial, business use, and not in compliance with the public codes as they could be used, connection with emissions, drugs, crimes, or constitutes endangerment to public health or safety as a result of unsanitary conditions, the public officer makes an investigation and then sends them a letter. So as you know, for those of you who were here when we were doing a lot of this, there was a group that designated the, y'all are the ones designating this, so something needs to be sent to the building inspector saying they designated this house as unfit, and they like for him to do an investigation. And I can help with that.
I think, doesn't that, in there, it says the public officer is either the building inspector, fire chief, or the city manager?
Ken, I...
I'm not trying, I just...
Well, no, you're probably right.
If Tim could do it without us having to...
Public officer means the officer, officers who are authorized by OCGA 41273, and I'd have to look and see what that is, to be honest with you.
Okay. So you just want us to make a motion that we proceed?
That y'all make a request to whoever the public officer is to investigate this.
And it is a tax sale, somebody that bought it on the tax sale, so that don't matter to me.
Well, if he makes a determination that it is unfit or is not in compliance with the code, at that point, we'll need to do a title examination because a lot of the tax sale have an interest in it, as does whoever the tax sale was and anybody else. When we were doing them, sometimes people have judgments against them, those people have the right, if there's mortgage on it, they have the right. So we'd have to determine who the parties' interests are.
Okay.
And we had a lot of them, I assume this is, based on my conversation with Mr. Clark, it's my understanding the owner's alive, sometime the owner's dead, and we had to determine who the heirs were, so...
Okay, do we have more?
I'll make a motion that we have the public officer go buy the spec.
We declare this unfit.
And we declare this unfit.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Next one, a resolution for the city for splotch. We've already done that.
We did that one, I think.
We did.
And now consider Michael Taylor's well permit.
Yeah, they've already come in and paid and done the paperwork, and they just didn't make it in time to get on this month, and I just hate to have them waiting another month. I mean, basically, I'd like to make the motion that we approve this irrigation well pinned in city administration approval, you know, if they've done all the things they're supposed to do.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor? He's got a permit. All right, now, city managers update.
All items from parts of meeting, the Highland Avenue CDBG grant continues to hold out a little bit. There is a fair amount of roadwork that needs to be repaired, still gravel, and once they do that, we're continuing to hold this $88,000 until that is all completed, because once that's done, we can let out the remaining funds. But there's still some cleanup to be done, but mainly it's just where the water and sewer lines were across streets in the city. EPD watershed protection plan, we're excited to have that plan approved, and we have not been sent a letter, but it has been approved. Lance is working now where the testing points will be and get that started for us, and then we'll have some third-party testing on that. And that just demonstrates that our sewer system is not leaking anywhere along the sewer system. And so that'll be an ongoing effort as well. New items, first of all, it's not in your report here, because I found out half the report was done. The 2016 CDBG has been submitted as of this afternoon, and that's really a continuation of the Highland Hills area that we're just completing now. So those typically get awarded late August, early September, so we'll be looking to hear. It's scored very high, and a lot of people are not putting in for this year for these grants, so we're very hopeful it's gonna be successful, and we'll continue that work on in that area, that neighborhood.
Did we get the sidewalk added on that project?
It could not be added.
It did not?
She's researching the DNR grant for that.
Okay.
Okay, it's gonna be a, it's a trail grant, but you can have a concrete trail down the side there.
Okay.
Harness facility, we had a barrel racing event in March, late March, a couple hundred horses there, and for the harness facility, our high point was 262 horses for this year, and I think we remember a couple of years ago, we had 90 horses, then we had 180, and then we had 262, and we actually had three or four homes bought this year by new horsemen. So we're excited about that. And we had a number of horsemen that are leaving their tack rooms here, so they'll have to come back here to get their tacks next year. So we're excited about that, and we let them leave it for free and store it and be here when we get back. So the harness festival, I don't want to steal a lot of Donna's thunder, but I just want to brag on Donna and Chelsea for, it was one of the best organized events I've been a part of for the harness festival. And although the well did cooperate, that's something we can't control, but as far as working through that, the public works guys did an outstanding job. We never saw them sitting down, they were there, they were working to move mud, move water, whatever they needed to do. And we even had some people parking up on the field that we were kind of worried about, but it was packed down hard enough. So public works guys and the water department guys that helped us out did an outstanding job, but the organization was outstanding, and Donna and Chelsea did a terrific job with that, for sure.
And you tried Luke Exman for that over there.
Yeah, and they got all the, all the 15 races on Sunday, and they had a number of people out there yesterday, and it was good to see all that, for sure.
I shared this with a couple of you before the meeting started, but I got an email from Donna today about the next event, so I mean, she hadn't even taken a breather, she's already working on the next one, so excellent job, Donna. And Sarah and Chelsea and everybody that was involved.
Lance Woods and I went to a meeting with DOT and Terry regarding the bridge replacements here for Highway 26 and 341, and there were 17 engineers around the table, and you can see that a couple of engineers didn't have their permits they needed to have, and so they had to put a delay on the project that frustrated the other 15 people. So, and there's not really a timeline for those environmental permits, so that's kind of got everything on hold. They were hoping to put the contracts out in May and then select a contractor and maybe have some dirt moved by the end of this year, but that's not gonna happen at this point. So it may be fall before we get the contracts out. But it looks like a pretty good plan. They're not really good on giving you, they're not really committal on timelines, but it could be two to five years that we would experience traffic upsets as they take one bridge down and replace it, and then take the other bridge down and then replace it as well. So that, the project's, it's ongoing and it's moving, it's just gonna be delayed by this permit, they're still waiting on it. We had a request for downtown parking striking from Commissioner Clark, and I had a company come in and start measuring everything, and then Johnny Gordon says, "We have everything we need to do that, just need to paint." And I said, "Well, let's get on it." And so once they, we got through with the harness festival thing, and he's ready to get started on that, so we'll get it done and make sure we get what we're looking for to make that cleaned up, make it look sharp, and do that. We have hired some part-time temporary summer help, which is grass cutting, and we had a struggle last year getting ahead of the value of grass we have in town and in the cemeteries as well. And we don't have the women's prison crew every day, and they also go to other communities and work as well. And so based on the unreliability of having them every day and having control of them, we got a couple of summer part-time temporary help, and later they understand it's just for the summer. And they'll be cutting grass, and hopefully we can stay up with it because we control them, we know where they are and what they're doing, and so we're excited about that. But that's sort of the report we've got, and then on the next page is your work orders we had for the month. And then your commercial accounts that are overdue. Any questions, or any of that information before we move the charts?
How's the sanitation fund? How's it going?
It just follows along with the water and the gas. Sanitation will be, it's billed by household, so again. If you want to move the charts, you can see that we're trending with the general fund here on our first chart, and you'll see that for April, May, June, July, and August, as Shelley said, we don't have a lot of big checks coming in for the next several months. So we'll get through the summertime on what we have here, and we'll look at the other charts, kind of give you an idea on gas. But water and sewers is trending where it should be. And gas, you can tell we've had a much warmer gas season than we had last year. January, February, March was much warmer than last year. But as of April the 1st, we're 100% municipal gas authority of Georgia, so they're managing things for us, and we're getting good communication from them as well, so that's working out real well, and I think that's gonna be a seamless transition as well. Your last chart is the harness track, and you can see there that it's outperforming the two previous years of charting we have there. And the next page, you'll see that we've taken in $116,000 so far this year for the harness facility, and that's basically a 32% increase over last year, for last season. And we want to continue to see that improve next year as well.
I ask you a question.
Yeah.
On the stall rentals, when they leave, do sometimes they keep them all year long and pay fees on all of it?
No, we don't have anybody that wants to reserve them all year long, but we do have some that are staying later into the season that may even stay through May or June because the horses are too young to race and earn money. So we do have a few of those staying around, and those are two or three of the races we saw yesterday at the very end, they're not actually running for money, but, so they'll stay a little bit later. And we're also increasing the stall rent next year from $100 a month to $125 a month, and all the horsemen were very, were okay with that, were fine with it, so we're excited about that.
Okay, awesome.
So that's my report, unless you have more questions on that.
Finance director report?
On the first page is what was in the bank, and that is reconciled with the bank's statement as of February 29, 2016. Right now, we have general, water, gas, and almost a million between the general and the enterprise funds and the harness track that we've got in the bank. And then on the second page, I'm going back and doing what you've normally been given, you were given expenditures for one month and revenue for a different month that I wouldn't, exactly sure why, so I did it for a month of February, that's revenue and expenditures for the month of February. And that is reconciled with all entries made and balance to the bank's statement for February. So that's each of the funds and then their fund balance. And then the last page, well, excuse me, the next spreadsheet, what I give y'all is your 2010 splotch activity that you, we have spent thus far on each of the projects. And I give you a breakdown of it based on what's actually been spent and what could have been spent based on true allocation and percentage, since we've technically been short each month on what we collected. So that's what I did in those, and that was, the second one was based on 64 months of collections, which is what we've collected on thus far through February, the 64 months. So we have a few more months to go to collect on that. And then the next one, I'm not technically asking for any of vote or anything tonight, but I wanted to give y'all the information that I got from two proposals on software, software vendors, and I give you the total cost for each of those software vendors, and I put their proposals in the book too, if you have anything better to do than read it. But I listed what we're currently paying our current software vendor, which is $6,200 a month, which is, the vendor that I particularly want is a little more than double that, but you're getting a lot better product.
That's a year or is that a month?
Which one?
You said...
That's a year.
That's a year, okay, you said month, I thought you said, didn't you?
Yeah, sorry, apologize.
So you like Edmonds? So you like Edmonds better?
So I listed the pros and cons for each of them. I've talked with our auditors, there's money left in the 2004 splotch that was allocated for software. Could use the remainder of that and also use splotch funds and not have to do the general fund to fund this big initial first cost. And then of course, the yearly support after would come out of general. But the good thing with either of these softwares is each time they have an upgrade, we give that upgrade at no additional, no additional charge. Your yearly maintenance could potentially go up, but you're not asked to pay this large sum of money for an upgrade.
And with, I guess, either of these, we can take credit cards, we can, can we take ACH for either?
We can, with Edmonds, let me see, I believe it was Edmonds, yeah, we can do a direct withdrawal from accounts if that, if a customer gives us that banking account information, we can do a direct withdrawal from the banking account.
And we can take credit cards, we can do?
Yes.
All that kind of wonderful.
Yes, online payments, in-house credit cards.
Can you have it set up by next week?
I tried. No, they kind of laugh at me when I say July 1st, so I'll have it next week.
I mean, that's, you know, this is part of our goal when we first put this money in splotch, was to get a system that would do the credit cards and the stuff, and to give us some better financial reports than we're getting, so wonderful. When you need it approved, let us know.
Yeah, I'm gonna put it on for next month, look for approval.
Do we need any hardware upgrades?
No, our server that we have now will do what they needed to do, is a new enough server that it will hold. And all the computers that we have are new, so I don't, the software, I'm making him talk down to 75, so we talk to him, and he's gonna throw in either a bar code scanner for the utility bills, so they can just scan... going to throw in either a bar code scanner for the utility bills. So they can just scan the, the code and it'll pull up the account. He's going to give us a credit card machine and then, what should I say? Oh, the receipt printer.
And three years of imported data. That's great. Wink him a lot. Give him, give him some good winks.
We didn't let you negotiate.
I tell you, instead of trying to negotiate on the, the upfront cost, try to negotiate on the year. That's the only part of the bottom rent, even though it's cheaper than the other one. But just see what you get.
That's all I have for y'all.
And the only, hey, add-on to that could be an electronic timekeeping system. So that everybody comes in, gets their electronic timekeeping rather than the manual.
Absolutely.
What about if we ever decided to go to the automatic meter readers with this?
If you get it to electronic format, they can handle it. And they lay on.
He said they can pull in whatever data we want to pull in.
That's great. You can do this. Good job, Sarah. Donna, do you want to say anything or Chamber and you think?
Okay, well, I'd just like to say a little bit more about the harness festival. We did have a great weekend, even though our events had been postponed to different days. We did get everything in that we promised that we would. And I just want to say, it takes a deal of people to get that, to go through. I mean, he did mention Sarah and Chelsea, Robin Connor and Brenda Valencia. They did the barbecue part for us. They did a great job. And in case you're wondering, Rescue Smokers was our grand champion this year and 92 Barbecue was the reserve champion. But anyway, I just wanted to say that it's during times like this when you have the rain that we had on Friday night, if y'all were in town, we had two to four inches. It never stopped all night. But we were nice and hot inside that nice arena that the city has.
Exactly right.
And, and there were other communities less fortunate. They were putting on the same type of event that we were and they were in the wide open. So ours went on without, you know, one little glitch. And so we're proud to have that facility. And I hope that we can use it for so many more things. Because when you're out there, you just really see the potential. But I did want to say, Tim, since you mentioned the barrel racing, we rented porta potties, of course, for the harness festival because of the bathrooms up near the arena. In addition to down at the track, we don't have enough restroom facilities. But the ones at the arena are currently closed, right, Tim?
Correct.
And so before the barrel racers come back again, one option that we found out about this weekend, AOK is who we rented our porta potties from. And they told me that they actually rent those portable trailers. They're like small, you know, regular restrooms, restroom facilities that even come air conditioned. So if the city needs something like that to, you know, to continue to have the arena available to be rented, because I don't know what the barrel racers would, how they would feel if they don't have restrooms available. So anyway, that is an option that you could use until those facilities are repaired. But anyway, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that helped. Because like Tim said, if it hadn't been for the city and county workers that were out there helping us in every way to make that event fun for everybody and manageable, you know, I mean, it was Saturday morning, it was very wet, but within a couple of hours, you couldn't even tell that we had had that rain because they were out there managing that situation. And on top of that, we could not have done anything if it hadn't been for all the sponsorships that we got this year. I mean, our businesses and individuals in this family were so generous that they made everything that we did so much easier. We were able to rent six golf carts to keep the horsemen moving back and forth to get the races done in a reasonable amount of time. And then it helped us too with getting supplies back and forth. I mean, it just really, it was a great weekend. And the weather did clear up and we had two good days with the festival, with the vendors on Saturday and then the races on Sunday. And I was getting calls. I had the office phone transferred to my cell phone from Thursday on. And I was getting calls constantly all weekend, including Sunday, from out of town people wanting to come to the races and out of town people coming to the fireworks. So it was, it was a good event. And lots of people came downtown because of all of those activities. Now, I do have some important dates. April 7th, we will be doing, presenting the steakhouse with business of the month and doing their presentation and Peta at 10:00 AM, April 7th. On April the 12th, there will be a forum for the candidates that are running for sheriff and tax commissioner. At 7:00 PM at the Opera House, there'll be a question and answer session there with Ron Wyman that'll be moderating that. On April 19th, we'll have the blessing of the crops at Horseshoe at 7:00 AM. And on April 21st, will be our next business after hours hosted by Breeze State Farm from 5:30 to 7:30. And I hope everyone will come out to all of those events.
Did you give me the sheriff thing?
It's going to be April the 12th at 7:00 PM. And a spread mission and they're encouraging everybody to come. They're going to actually have a, it's going to be a live remote to a radio station and then comes out, it's going to video it to show on the TV. And that's it.
That's good. Did you ever hear anything back from the sirens?
I contacted them today. They're on the road on one of their projects. So I'm still waiting to hear back from them. But I called them and emailed them and all. And did you want me to contact them? It's okay.
Yeah, I'm always moving.
I'm happy.
Thank you, Donna. Appreciate it. Mr. Lee?
On the United Kalaski, three very active projects that we've been working on for a while. Things are really looking good. I think this plan's going to develop into some real big calls. Also too, UP nominated H&amp;V for business of the year for the state. And that event will be held April the 21st, the same day of the teammates. It'll be a group. I'll represent the community. Probably I think five people from H&amp;V are going and we'll go with Central Georgia Tech as that guest to sit at that table. So looking forward to that. Y'all keep your fingers crossed that H&amp;V might pull that off this year. It's obviously at three categories, large, medium, and small. We don't think of H&amp;V being small on, on that level. They are, they'd be the smallest one to consider. This is a big state thing with the governors. It's a pretty big deal. So they'll be recognized whether they win or not. So it's a good positive thing for H&amp;V.
Good. Thank you. And I'm glad you mentioned teammates. Y'all, the April 21st is over.
Yeah, I want to say that for Michelle. She called me today. She couldn't be here. The teammates, which is huge, what, 200 to 400 volunteers? That will be held April the 21st. If this year's going to be.
All days. If you've got any time, all during school hours, please stop by and they'll put you to work.
And they really, they really need volunteers. So call Michelle to sign up for that. Also too, on April the 16th, the archway leadership group, adult leadership will be having that golf tournament, which is a big fundraiser thing. It'll be on April the 16th. So that's two dates that Michelle will be to remind y'all what to think about. So any information, give her a call.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Lee.
Yes, sir.
Before we get into commission comments, Mr. English, have you got anything that you want to complain about or anything right now?
Henry, I'm not really going to get into that because there's so many people that really thought, you know, everything was real fun out there. So I'm not really going to get into that.
Well, let me just tell everybody what's going on. We, we had a vendor which paid a, a spot. And he was outside in the rain. He wanted to move in. And I think you said something about you, they told you can move in, but when you started.
Yeah, they were telling us to move in that.
They did not say. And you was saying you weren't going to come back again. So we want to try to find out why you didn't get to come in or whatever.
The reason I didn't go in because it wouldn't let.
But you paid for a spot and you needed a spot. But did anybody else go inside? You said, I think you said somebody else went inside.
Yeah.
I was the only, Henry, I was the only one outside.
Okay.
Now, it, I mean, he, he rented for me for Saturday for the festival down by the racetrack. But he wanted to be on Friday night up at the barbecue, which I don't have any say so with that. And so when he showed up, I told him to get with Robin and Brenda because they had all that set up with their barbecue teams and whatnot. And I actually only rented for Saturday down by the racetrack. So I don't know what happened after that. I guess maybe he spoke with Robin and Brenda.
You paid for Friday. Joe, did you pay a spot for Friday? Did you pay, pay a fee for the, the spot you had?
Oh, Henry, I don't know. I paid, I paid $50.
You paid 35 to me?
35, 35 to the chamber and then $50 to the city.
And that was for the beer, the beer alcohol.
Special for me guys. So I, you know, I paid what, what I thought was what it was supposed to be. I don't know.
What, what I'm trying to get at, Tim, is he, he's paid the customer, he didn't get to come inside because it's flooding down right. He didn't get to make any revenue at all. So I'm just trying to ask why he didn't get to come in. So I'm just trying to find that for him.
Yeah. I think the answer is, is this is a chamber issue more so than, than this commission. But we'll be glad to check into it and see what happened. I think Sarah and I both are unaware if there was any more conversations.
Yeah, me neither. I didn't know anything about it.
So, so it was really, Robin and Brenda were kind of running that part of it up top. But, you know, they didn't come to us and ask for, but we'd be glad to check into it.
You check in, let me know and I can let you know or you can let him know, whatever. Okay. All right. Commission comments. Mr. Carlson, you'd like to start?
Uh, yes. We, you know, we got a lot of employees and I appreciate everything that the city does. But we got some guys who work out in the field. And you know, I do a lot of riding and I see. And there are four guys that I know most time they're working together sometime by themselves. And one of them is here today, Seth back there. And the other three guys are Wesley Robertson, James Ross, and Johnny Singletary. Now, you see those guys, you need to thank them. Because those guys go 101%. I don't care how hot it is, how cold, whatever they're doing out there. They won't even stop. They just getting it, you know? So we need to let those guys know that we really appreciate them too. So when you see them, let them know.
Every time I write this down, this guy's got to hand them something.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I don't know all their names, but I know their faces. I know Wesley and Seth were out there trying to pack that parking lot to keep us bogging down. And like Seth, I don't know all their names. But yes, they were out there for, from Thursday on constantly with us doing something.
Absolutely.
And they, they drove the tractors for the people movers all day Saturday, moving kids and adults back and forth. And yes, they did a lot. And, and moved our trash cans around and emptied them for us. They, they were busy.
That's all I got.
I've got just a couple of things. David was going to look at about the, the speed limit downtown, whether we could change that or not. Or is that a DOT type project?
I didn't know I was going to do that.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Tim mentioned it to me and I told him that I didn't think you can change your state road speed limit on state road.
Okay. I think we've asked that before.
Yeah, I think that's what I've heard the past.
Yeah, we've, I've never.
Well, I'd like for us to get a letter up to, to send to the state DOT and ask them if we could reduce the speed limit from 35 to 25. And also if we could put two radar signs on either end of Commerce Street showing what your actual speed is. I mean, people on Commerce Street are flying through there. And the speed limit right now is 35. And if you go 35, then that's pretty fast for folks cutting back across. But I think if we could send a letter to DOT or give authorization to Tim to, to sort of work that out if we need to send a letter or whatever, and all of them sign it to get it done. Because that's one of the big complaints they get from the merchants downtown.
Does that need to be in the formal motion or just ask Tim to send a letter and ask?
Finance, just ask Tim.
The other thing I'd like to bring up is we did away with the municipal court back when all this was going on.
Correct.
And we're having some trouble. You want to explain that a little bit, Tim? We got a dog bite case that nobody listened to it.
We have a couple of issues that we don't have a good resolution for. And one's a dog bite case the last week. And how to write the, the summons for that or a ticket for it. Because currently, the magistrate court doesn't want to hear city dog bite cases. So we don't have any avenue of pursuing.
I thought our code enforcement board was going to be able to hear those types of things.
Well, what we think is that the code enforcement board doesn't have the ability to levy jail time or prison time, not prison time, jail time or fines and that kind of thing. But they don't. They're more building code related enforcement board.
Plus, we're going to need a municipal court for this, for the dilapidated housing stuff.
Let me say this, Shelley. I've been running back and forth from here, period, all day.
And we said, you're looking for.
No, I'm, I thank y'all. Let's, don't make any decisions on that right now. The, I have, I just have not had time to look at the state law. What the, Ken and I talked about this on this morning and so did Tim and I. And I am a little more inclined to think that maybe the code enforcement board might can't hear particularly the, the dilapidated housing. That I, I sent a letter to Jared back in 2012 of the, and I don't know whether y'all took it up or not. But the state changed the law on dangerous dogs and, and potentially dangerous dogs. And, and you have a, I believe I'm right in saying that you have a dog boy that hears those kind of things. And I mean, you, under the state law.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
And, and I, and I think the state law says that the city will have that. And I think that's what I said, told, told. And the city doesn't have that. If you recall, kind of when all that came up, we zeroed in on pit bulls and, and that was it. But I would like to revisit that and suggest again that we have a, if a dog, if a dog bites you, it doesn't matter what kind it is.
Right, right. Well, I think ours all relate to it. If, if there's a state law regarding this, can't this be written up for county and not city?
Yeah, I think that could.
And so then whoever would hear it, if it was in the county, would hear this?
The county, yeah. I mean, the county, I would think could make the, but I, but I don't want to talk too much without.
I understand. Okay.
I looked, I looked at some of that briefly today. And I'm not sure that there's not jurisdictions on that. So.
Okay.
If we brought back the municipal court, could we meet quarterly instead of having a monthly work?
I would think you could, certainly could do that.
Well, if we brought it back, are we obligated then to hear our old speeding cases? I mean, I don't want to go back to where we were before all this.
We did a lot of research and I, I looked at that again today briefly. I just didn't have time to look at it like I needed to. And I think at the, at the time, I gave y'all several different options. And one option was, I think, under one option, the municipal court could hear cases like that and let the, the, leave it like it is as far as the speeding and DUIs and that kind of thing.
All right, good.
Give me.
Can we just ask you to research that some more?
Well, I am. I'm going to. They should tell me not to. I'm going to do it anyway.
Well, that's an option we could look at is maybe bringing the municipal court back on a quarterly basis. And that wouldn't cost the city that much as long as we're not doing traffic fines and stuff like that.
Okay. That's all I have.
But I, but I, I don't, I, I tend to be like, I'm going to hush after this, but I tend to be like what Tim said, that when we think of code enforcement, we think of building regulation. But I'm not, I'm not sure that that's, that they can't hear any code, any ordinance that you pass that doesn't have anything to do with state law.
That's, that's, that's what I thought was going to happen. I wasn't sure.
I think that could very well be the case. But I need, need to check it out.
Okay. I just want to commend everybody, Chelsea, Donna, Sarah, everybody that had a part in the harness festival, just want to commend them because they did a great job. That's all I got.
Hey, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
You talked about the speed limits on Commerce. What's the, what's the law governing the, these big trucks that go down through there and fly?
Well, that's what we're just, we were just talking about. It's state roads. And we're trying to find out if we can reduce it down from 35 to 25. And they're probably going 50, but.
Yeah.
And they're probably going fifty, but, you know.
Yeah. Yeah. I thought that's what the truck route was for.
Coroner, what we say is it's a state highway. We got to let the trucks go through on that. That's what the DOT was telling us.
We want rerouting and the DOT won't let us.
Can you adjust the, the stoplights? Could you make the lights stay red on the side? They do that?
What we're asking is to drop it from thirty-five to twenty-five than those flashing speed detectors. You know, like I've talked about, when I see one, I, I slow down when I see one. You know, it might work on some, it might not, but...
Can't hurt. That's what we're trying to do, Joe. We're trying to make do something like that.
I'm surprised somebody didn't get a door worn off of a vehicle.
Especially at the post office.
Exactly, exactly.
That's a, that's a good place.
A door alarm. Exactly. Ken?
I was contacted by some Southern Hills residents. Wanted to know if we could put a weather siren up there for them since they can't hear the ones in town. And they are city residents, so they have a point.
I've already mentioned that last week too. I got contacted as well. He said it's about twenty-something thousand dollars and, and then quickly changed the subject and kind of moved on with something else too. He didn't seem to be that interested in doing it. But again, it may just, maybe he wouldn't have paid for it. Maybe if we helped on that or with SLOSS dollars or something, he might be. But, um, we were in a crowd and I didn't really have a chance to follow up with it. Yeah, I agree. You can't hear it if you're not there.
And whenever you look at the DNR grants, uh, keep in mind Uchi Shoal's out there. If you see anything that might fit, that overflow into that. That's all I got.
I was approached by a couple of the horsemen that have like RVs and stuff out there. And they wanted to know if a tornado, if a storm or whatever comes, where should they go to? And I wasn't sure how to answer that. We don't have storm shelters, bomb shelters anymore like we used to. I- i- is there a designated place for people?
There ain't nothing out there that won't be blown away.
I know, not out there especially. But I mean, where should they go? Um, closest to...
The post office used to be a fallout shelter.
Right.
The basement was. But I don't know whatever happened to that. But at one time it was a fallout shelter.
Our, our church does not have a basement. But along the same lines, Jeff has agreed that he'd be more than happy to, for you to post his phone number. And he would open the church 24/7 if, if they just needed somewhere to go, to go, or the CLC. But, um, so that's available if you want to post that or tell, you know, put that in their information package when they first open up or whatever.
Basement up and sit down.
Yeah. Not me either. Ain't a hole in it.
But there's a lot of breakable.
You know, first backwards has a basement. You may actually want to ask them.
Well, I mean, what about River Market where we had the home and house?
Yeah. That's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
I mean, it's huge.
Think about that. I was stretching my brain trying to think of a basement.
It would hold a lot.
Yeah, it would.
Does it stay open all the time?
Well, now it's locked right now.
Basement is locked, but upstairs is...
I mean, we have a 24-hour emergency number with the city. I mean, all it takes is somebody go out there and lock it if, if there's a...
Well, last week I asked Keith, he goes down there all the time. Turn on the alarm.
Well, think about that as far as what we need to tell them. I, I think we ought to provide something somewhere if it's just a notification. That's all I've got. Do we need, um, executive? Okay. Just no problem? I'll make a motion to go ahead and executive session for personnel and for real estate acquisition. Grab a second?
Same.
All in favor? Motion passed. Thank y'all for coming.